Welcome, everyone, to the Select Board meeting for April 12th. I'd like to call the meeting to order and start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Warrants have been signed, so...
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second. All in favor? Okay, we have an agenda. Minutes, we're going to take up the next meeting?
Table those.
Table those, okay. Town administrators' weekly update.
All right. First, I have to present to you that the 2324 winter salt bid has been done. The road commissioners reached out to me and informed me that they updated and sent the email along, so that has come off your pending list. Next is just a reminder that I've sent you the Balch Dam Bridge report.
Yes.
I'm going to put it on the agenda for April 26th, so that you have some time to review it.
Is that the only bridge that we got a report on?
That was the only one.
Hmm, okay.
They're scattered based on the timing of the last one, so I'd have to pull the dates.
I see, okay. I was wondering about that.
All right. Also, on the April 26th meeting, remember, we have a special town meeting next week, so we'll have no regular board meeting. We do have a property owner that's come to us with the request that he be on your agenda for the possibility of donation of a piece of land.
Okay.
So I will forward you the emails regarding that, but that will be on the 26th.
All right.
You're going to have a busy night, because we're also going to talk about the facility assessment. You all got your binders, so...
Yes, we do.
I'll quiz you then.
And that has been posted also?
Yes, sir. So we added a new page on the town's website that says "Selectmen Pending", and everything that you ask to be pended is posted, is there with the date that we expect you to take action. O'Donnell's and Associates sent me an email letting me know that next week they're going to be doing a little more fieldwork, just a few random houses that they weren't able to visit. So you may see them. As always, they've got identification on their cars, they've got badges. If you have any questions, you can call us.
When are they... There's a meeting scheduled with them?
You have a meeting with them the last Wednesday of the month, the 26th, at 3:00
Okay.
For the board, just to talk about preliminary numbers and the next step.
So is that a regular board meeting, or is that a special?
It's a workshop at 3:00 with them.
At 3:00, and we've asked them to provide information in advance of that meeting?
Yes, we have. They're working on that, yeah.
Thank you, all right.
Wanted to let you know that the, I guess, two things. I did work with the treasurer to do some adjustments on the office assistant budget. You'll see that coming up. But I also want to talk to the board about possibly considering a proposal of getting some website assistance. We have an employee now that does a lot of our editing and is a backup through our APAT. With the new website that's going to be coming up by June 1st, we hope, we're really going to be utilizing lots of different boards, committees. We really want to make everybody as active on the site as we can. I think that it would be beneficial to the town, and it's not something we have to get into detail about tonight, if we considered bringing him in at 10 hours a week. That's two hours a day, and he would be maintaining and doing everything on the website. He says that he can put everything up within 24 hours. So when you have your selectman meetings now, there's going to be the minutes from last week and a link to the video. You know, and that's going to be for every single board and committee. They're going to have their own pages and area. So it's going to be a lot of work to maintain it with how we're building it, so something to think about.
Is there an opportunity in that design process for them to review what it is they're designing and attempting to build?
Yes, they're working on a proposal now, based on the information that Dan and I have given them.
I see.
And they're going to be giving you a draft website. Essentially, Dan and I met last week.
Okay.
We looked at a lot of different towns, found things that we liked, that we didn't like.
Yeah.
You know, the incorporation of the calendar, and just to make it as user-friendly with the most information as possible.
Did I hear you had an expected live date of June 1st?
Yes.
Hmm, okay.
What are you thinking?
No, it's great. It's that quick.
Yeah, no, we're...
It's amazing.
Like I said, it was just a matter of looking at different towns and picking some colors and...
Okay.
You know, they're taking all of our information and putting it on there, but, you know, a lot of our committees, you know, we use Warren and Finance, for example, you know, they don't have to take minutes anymore. There's minutes on there from, let's just say, 2006 to 2008, but there's been no minutes since then. So, you know, we have to make a decision. There's no reason to have those on there, right? If we're just going to just start doing video links.
They're retained elsewhere, right?
Yes.
They're just not available through the website.
On the website, right.
I see.
I'm just saying that with the amount that this website has to offer, it's going to be a... It's going to take a good chunk of somebody's time.
I think initially, I suspect it will for maybe the first six or 12 months especially, and then we'll have a better sense of what the required maintenance is going forward.
I think that you'll find that we update the website almost daily with something.
Okay, all right, okay, all right.
Got a call today from Seth McCoy, and he wanted to publicly make known that he's willing to make a donation of material of some sort for the rec field, rec committee, if the need arises. I did tell him that...
Very generous.
We were at a early stage as far as redoing the parking lot, and that we'll keep in mind and pass it along.
Well, thank you, Mr. McCoy.
Two things last, second to last is to let you know that the West Shore Drive link is up. It's on the homepage of the website.
Oh.
This is for the culvert project, so you can click on that. As soon as you click on it, you're asked to put in your name and email. That puts you on a list with the engineering firm, so that anytime there's an addendum or an updating, a date coming up for a meeting, that it puts you on an email dispersment with them.
Hmm.
So that is online.
Is that done through the town's email website, or through the ransom?
It's all handled through ransoms.
Yeah, okay.
We just have a link to ransom's page.
Okay.
And last, a little further down the agenda, you'll see that we have an audit overview. For those of you that are watching at home, a very quick run-through of where you're going to be able to find the document that Mr. McGurty is going to be referencing. If you go to the town's homepage, actinmaine.org, you're on the homepage. On the left, it says "Pending Board of Selectmen", "Selectmen Pending". If you click on that, there are four or five things listed. The very last one says "Audit Presentation", so should give you time to find that. But again, very, very easy to find. Go under Pending on the left, and then the last item is a PDF of this presentation.
And when we get into that item, we'll state that again for those of you who weren't able to get all of that, okay?
All right, that's all I have.
Anything else, Jennifer?
No, sir.
Very good. Department head committee chair updates.
Will Langley, District 1, just a few things. Last week, we pulled the road postings last week. I forgot to mention it to you guys. And then also, today, we went down to Sam Page Road. Do you remember Susan Meham came up? So that's all taken care of. We extended the culvert, put a piece of granite on the top, so there, we're all good down there. And we also had some salt hauled in down in the sand shed. So we're all restocked back up for this fall and everything, when we put sand up and everything. So we're all set down there. And then I plan on probably start sweeping probably the end of next week. I've got some stuff I need to do this week, but we'll come to the town hall like we do every year, get this all cleaned up and everything, and work our way down. I don't like to start too early, because I'll jinx myself, then it'll probably snow again, so...
Oh, God.
But that's our plan.
Yeah, don't jinx us, man. I've done that before, where I've gone out and sweated, and, yeah, the next load that goes out would be straight salt. You going to try to do the parka here when the place is closed?
Yeah, we don't, we usually try to do it like Mondays or Thursdays, so that's when we try to come here, so...
And future reference, when you pull those postings, can you make sure the town...
Yeah, I forgot to tell Jen, so, all right.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Hand?
Robinian Transfer Station Superintendent. I'm just letting you people know that I'm going to have to have District 1 come up and push the... Stack the brush pile up, and also the cement piece in front of the sand shed that we have up to the transfer station. The rebar is coming out of there. We had a person trip last week, neat before last, on the rebar that keeps coming up because of the salt eating the cement away.
What is it? Is there a foot or something?
It's a pad. It's a pad in front of there, and it's, yeah.
So you're going to block that off?
I already, I already blocked it off. I got it coned off, and, yeah.
Is that something we're going to have to get fixed, obviously?
I prefer not to put any cement back, just have it gravelled. I don't know why there's a cement thing there anyways.
Well, you may have to. I mean, uh... I don't know if it's DEP or whatever, but they're required to have some...
There's no, there's nothing, I don't believe there's anything under the sand. It might be. I'll have to...
So what's the concrete, then?
It's just where the truck backs up and drops the sand inside the thing.
It's a pad that the truck drives onto to dump the sand?
No pad on the inside.
Yeah, I don't believe so. I'll look again, but I'm not 100% sure.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I just kind of...
I will, I'll double-check that, but I know there's a pad on the outside, and we need to...
So what are you thinking, to rip that up?
Rip that up, dispose of it, and just put gravel back there. That's my recommendation, but...
So it's not a hazard anyways?
Yeah.
Right.
It's there.
We can assess whether we need to, if the, yeah, yeah. We can reassess whether we need to put a new pad in, but at the moment, if you don't think we need one, and they're on the regulations, I don't know why we do it.
He's going to be there with the excavator stacking the piles, or might as well get the...
Right, yeah, yeah. Right, just letting you people know that that's what I'm going to have...
You dispose of the stuff on site anyways, aren't you?
Yes, yep.
And the person that tripped was a resident?
Yes.
Was he injured?
No, no, he didn't want, I saw him trip. He didn't come see me. I went down and saw him.
Good, good feeling.
And I see him stumble. He didn't fall down, he just kind of stumbled.
Okay.
So I went down and approached him, and I said, "Hey", he says, "Yeah, there's a rebar sticking up here", and it was. It was probably sticking up a couple, three inches. He tripped, I went down, spoke to the gentleman, he didn't want, no name, no nothing.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I blocked it off.
And I get it all coned off.
Good, good.
Perfect.
Yep, that's it.
Very good, thank you. Liaisons. I'll be honest with you, I've been tied up with the audit, so I haven't done much other than that, so... And you'll hear about that in a moment. David?
There was a forest conservation meeting last night. I missed it, so I don't have anything on.
And Kim has an illness in the family, and unfortunately not be able to be here with her. We wish her and her family well. Old business, commercial hauler application. We briefly discussed this at our last meeting?
A couple of meetings ago, yes.
Yeah?
This is for J.A. Brock Land Management LLC. The only thing that he was missing was a list of the equipment. He has provided that and has also paid the fee, so per the ordinance, he's good to go. Just need a...
You need a vote, or just a signature?
No, a motion to accept him. It is a one-year agreement.
Make a motion to sign the application for commercial hauls permit for J.A. Brock Land Management LLC.
I'll second. All in favor? Okay.
Yeah, there's something missing, so we didn't actually vote last time?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
That was easy.
It's fine, just like...
Okay. Onto new business, audit overview. Well, I'm pleased to be able to report that we've received the audit for the year ending June 30, 2022. I believe that was, I signed acceptance of that Tuesday, Tuesday afternoon. So I've had a chance to go through the material and have put together some information that I wanted to share with you tonight. The audit itself will be posted, if it hasn't already been?
It hasn't, because the rest of the board hadn't gotten it, but it will be tomorrow.
Okay, so it will be posted shortly. This is about 100 pages of material that will be posted in its entirety. But I have about six pages here that I wanted to review this evening. For those in the meeting here on-site, they have a paper copy of the material. Jennifer has posted it on our website, and that is where again, Jennifer?
So on the homepage, actinmaine.org. To the left, it says "Meeting Schedule", "Select Board Agenda", and the third one is "Select Board Pending". If you click on "Select Board Pending", number four, "April 12th, 2023 Audit Overview Presentation", click here, and that opens up the document.
Okay. This, the material tonight is substantially going to cover the general fund, which is everything other than the school budget. Although some of the material will touch on the school funds as well. But it's intended to really deal with the general fund of the town. This first schedule is a balance sheet for the general fund. And a balance sheet basically says, what do you have in assets? What do you have that's tangible, that's of value? What do you owe people? And the difference between those two is the net amount of equity or interest that the town has. This schedule shows 2022 balances, what they were in '21, and what the change has been over the last 12 months. You can see, we've been talking a lot about cash. And by the way, these, this is a summation of the audit schedule. The audit balance sheet is a little more complicated, and I thought the summary view would suffice what we need to get through this evening. So we have $6,22,645 in cash. Last year, that was $5,762,000, or an increase of $260,000. Well, included in that $6 million is $1,985,000 that is included in the town's accounts, is really being held on behalf of the town, of the school. So that money is basically there for the school to spend in future periods. So the net amount is the cash, if you will, that is owned by the general fund to cover general business needs of the town. That's $4,037,000. Last year, it was $6,395,000, so it's increased $642,000 over the last year. There are some investments that are held in certain highly restrictive funds that we have that went down in value by about $12,000. And then we have money that is owed to us, basically accounts receivable. These are monies that we will collect in the future for taxes and other items of $157,000. Excuse me, $429,000. So these are amounts that will eventually come to us, and generally, those are collected over the next three to six months. Now, we also have liabilities. These are amounts that are due and payable for vendor payments, taxes that we, payroll taxes, et cetera, whole variety of things, and those amounts are $623,000. And those balances will be paid out over the next three or four months. So what you're left with are fund balances or equity. And of the equity that we have, undesignated reserves total $2,897,000 at year-end for the town alone. In addition to that, we have other reserve accounts, primarily for capital and various purposes where it's been approved through an article at town meeting to put money into a particular reserve account. For instance, we put some money into a fund to cover the revale cost. Or we put money into the West Shore Drive culvert, things like that. So the balance of all of those reserve accounts at the end of the year totaled $1.1 million. You can see that that equity for undesignated reserves increased over the prior year by $215,000, and the equity or fund balance for all of those other individual reserve accounts increased $412,000. So a total increase in fund balances of $627,000. The next page is what I'll call the profit and loss statement. It says, "What were you budgeted to spend? What were you budgeted to receive in revenue? What did you actually receive in revenue? What did you actually pay in expenses? And how did you do relative to that budget?" The first column here is the original budget, and this goes right back to the articles that were approved at town meeting, all the expenditure amounts, and they can all be traced right back to those articles. So you can see the revenue budgets were $8,274,000, and the expense budget was $8,274,000. At the time that original budget was passed, we were expected to balance our budget. There were subsequent articles, warrants, that were approved at town meeting that authorized the town to expend additional sums. And I'll get into a little later on exactly what those were for. But they indicated that we would have, be able to spend an additional $834,000 on top of the $8.2 million that the original budget warrants authorized. So we were authorized to spend $9,109,000. And again, I'll show you in a minute all the detail backing up that $9 million, but remember that number. And that $9 million included money we were going to transfer to the school of $4.4 million. So when you looked at the change of all of that, we were expecting, according to our budget, to generate effectively a reduction, a loss, of $791,000. That's what we were authorized to do with all of the articles and warrants that were approved at town meeting. What we actually did was an $81,000 surplus. So we were authorized to generate a deficit of $791,000, but we actually generated a surplus of 81. That meant that we had an improvement over budget of $873,000 last year. And all of the lines here will detail for you how much of that was in general government, public safety, public works, et cetera. So that surplus of $873,000 came about because our revenues exceeded the budget by $333,000, and our expenditures were less than budgeted by $539,000. So the combination of those two are both positive, and we actually had a surplus of $873,000. Does that make sense to everyone here? Okay. So flipped to the next page, and this is a schedule that has always been in the audit. I'm not sure it's been, received much coverage, but I thought I'd include it here. And this is right out of the audited statement, Schedule A. And this lists all the individual tax accounts or revenue accounts for the town. And you'll notice the final budget for revenue was $8,317,000, which agrees with the previous page. We actually had $8,650,000 in revenue, or we had an extra revenue over budget of $333,000. And this schedule will detail for you exactly which revenue accounts had excess revenue, or actually, one of them came under budget, and that was building permits. But everything else was above budget. So revenue was to the good of $333,000. Turn to the next page, and actually, the next two pages details all the individual budget accounts for the town in general government, public safety, public works, recreation, and other. And so all the individual expense accounts are listed there. It shows what the budget was, the original budget, the revised budget, what the actual expenditures were. And you go to the bottom in that second page, and you see that, in fact, we didn't spend $539,000 that we were authorized to spend. The combination of that plus the extra revenue gets us back to the $800,000-plus surplus that the town generated. Before I go on, any questions? Okay. This next page, I took all the articles and warrants that were approved at town meeting, and I scheduled them out so that everyone could see where that $9 million expense budget came from. And you can see every one of these warrants are, has a warrant, has a warrant number associated with it. And all of the amounts are listed there, and it shows for, for instance, public works, there were almost seven different warrant articles that were approved that produced a budget for public works of $1,563,000. So if anybody wants to go through that detail, they can, but you can, from this, at least understand where these budgets are coming from. Any questions? Okay. The next schedule is a listing of all of the town's fund balances, and included in here is also the school. But these are all of the town fund balances, and they tie right back to the balance sheet that I referenced earlier. And for instance, it shows that the general fund at the end of the year had a total fund balance of $3,078,000, of which unassigned or undesignated fund balances were $2,897,000. And all of the individual reserve accounts that you often hear people talk about, the, you know, the culvert reserve or whatever, everything is listed here. So if you want to know what makes up our fund balances or reserve accounts, it's all on this schedule. I'll be honest, I had to pull this together. It was contained in multiple locations in the financial statements, and it was very difficult to see exactly what our reserves were, so by this, you get it all on one page. Okay? So... I took on the next page and summarized how those fund balances or undesignated fund balances line up against our surplus policy. And our surplus policy says, take the expense budget for the prior year, and your surplus or undesignated reserve should be within a range of 16.7% and 33% of those expenditures. So our expenditures in fiscal year '22 were $4,162,000. That's per the audit. 16.7% would indicate that, at the low end of that range, your undesignated reserve balance should be $695,000. At the high end of range, which is 33%, your surplus should be $1,387,000. We actually have a surplus of $2,897,000. So we have an amount in excess of our own surplus policy, sitting in our undesignated reserves of, at the low end, $1,005,000 to an upper end of $2.2 million. So we have someplace between $1,500,000 and $2.2 million in undesignated reserves in excess of the town's stated reserve policy, surplus policy. So it's actually great news that we have amounts in excess of what was expected. And I think it creates an opportunity for the town to figure out, what should it do with this? How should it go about determining what to do with those surplus reserves? David and I have had a chance, Kim has not. This is all relatively new information, although I think we've been talking about it over the last couple of meetings, when we've been talking about some of our cash balances and belief that we probably have funds in excess of what would be allowed under a surplus policy. Personally, what I think ought to happen at this stage is the town ought to engage and develop a financial plan. A financial plan, like a three- to five-year financial plan. I personally would not be in favor of any kind of immediate action to say, "Oh, let's do X with this money." I think we need to, it would be appropriate to take a three, maybe a five, but at least a three-year view that says, "This is what we have for reserves. This is what we expect our revenues to look like over the next three to five years. This is what we think our expenditures might look like. What other needs do the town have beyond what would typically be carried in the budget?" And we've talked about a lot of them here over the last, you know, couple of months. We just had an assessment done on this facility that would suggest that there's an opportunity to do some renovation and to refurbish the old firehouse. That's a possibility. The road agents have talked about widening the H Road. There have been comments about tax relief. Some or all of those, I think, are very legitimate considerations to take. But I think we really need to be very careful, make sure we understand not only where we are as of June 30, '22, but where we're likely to be over the next three years, to make sure that we, if we're going to take action, that we don't whipsaw the tax rate in the process, that we're very thoughtful about how these monies should be applied, where they should be applied, and at what timeframe, and do it in an orderly fashion and in a transparent fashion, so that everybody in town has an opportunity to understand what's being proposed. So that kind of financial planning is, you know, a pretty standard thing that takes place, I think, in many organizations. Personally, I think if we can, if we can have the services of the accounting firm that has been suggested, they will actually do that for us. What we probably would need is a multi-year road plan. We'd need to, we need information from the Capital Planning Committee about what they're hearing departments are looking for. And we need to see what the revale looks like and the impact that's going to have on the tax rate. So there's too many moving pieces out there right now, I think, to take any immediate action on this. But the important thing is this, it's all upside. It's all positive. There's nothing here that is going to be any kind of shock to anyone.
We're in a really good place.
We're in a good place, and so we just want to be, you know, it's like winning the lottery. Do you go out and spend it all overnight? No, at least I wouldn't. No, at least I wouldn't. But, you know, you think about what you, you know, what you need over time. And so what I'm suggesting, and David and Kim, I think, are in agreement, that we engage in that financial planning over the next few months, so that we can come back and talk about what we would suggest as a recommended course of action for the town.
I mean, if the departments, fire department, roads, rack, transfer station, you know, we don't want it to be free-for-all. You know, what we want to do is, like Tom said, figure out what we need for the next three years, take this money, we, you know, get a plan on what projects need to be done, plus how much we can offset taxes with some of it. You know, I'm just concerned, you know, that we don't want, like Tom said, we don't want to go spend all this money at once. Because we have this money, the revenues that have been coming into town hall have been way more than we figured they were going to be. But we don't know what that's going to be in the next couple of years. So I think this is a process where, like Tom says, three years. But we need that plan, and we need our department heads to come up with a plan, you know, so that way there, we can figure out where this money's going to go. Plus, when we start figuring out our new tax rate and stuff, we've got to zero when to figure out how we can make it. You know, this is a great problem to have, but we don't want to be in this situation. Because it doesn't look good on anybody, because it, you know, what I hear is, "Oh, we're being overtaxed if you got all this money." You're right, you are. So we don't want to be doing that anymore. That's, you know, we've always kept the tax rate. I've always been that guy who says, "Keep the tax rate the same." I don't want the tax rate moving. You know, we'll offset, do whatever we have to to keep it there, because I don't want to drop the tax rate, which I think we're going to have to do, just off the top of my head. Because I don't want to say, "Okay, we're going to drop it to 8.5," and then, two years from now, we're going to go to 15. You know, we don't want that dramatic change. So, you know, we've really got to sit down and scratch some numbers around and try to figure out a formula, how, you know, we don't have that $800,000 to $900,000 a year surplus like we're having right now, that, you know. Having a surplus is a good thing, but not those type of numbers.
But this surplus is really going to help with the revale. It's going to help bring it down to, you know what I mean? You're going to be able to use that money to counter those assessments, because it's been 10, 12 years. So we know that values are low, so, you know, as much as people may not appreciate you having that in there, it's going to help when they get their new numbers.
You know, between that and, you know, with the revale, the way we were looking at those numbers, you know, you're going to have to drop the tax rate.
Right.
You know, we can't use this every year, because we'll run out of that money. Thanks, Tom. I appreciate going through that with us.
Good job.
Yeah, any comment?
On the last page.
Yes.
I looked at excess low range, 2.3 million, and a higher range of 1.5 million.
Yes.
Those numbers transposed, or?
No, this is the excess. The excess, when you use the low range, which is 16.7%, that suggests you should have $695,000 in undesignated reserves. We actually have $2,897,000. So on the low range, we have, if you use that as your benchmark, you've got 2.2 million more than the 16.7% would suggest you should have.
That's confusing. I had to think about the same thing.
Well, minimum maximums.
Yep.
I got the math now.
Okay. Any other comment? We've got an executive session coming up, but before I...
Bee?
Did I miss something?
Yeah.
Yes.
Your new business.
Oh, how could I forget? Jennifer.
Just trying to make it.
Sorry, Jennifer.
So last week, we discussed and posted the hours. We are looking at changing the town hall hours, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Really, the biggest change the residents will see is that we'll be closed on Saturdays, still open late Thursday nights. We're actually increasing the hours by five, so that is helpful, doesn't change staff at all. I'm just going to pull up the hours here. So to the public, it's going to be Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. Thursday's 12 to 7:00. And we'd like to start at May 1st.
And as you talked about at our last meeting, this went through quite a bit of consideration.
A lot.
And what Jennifer had done was really determine what the hours were at a number of...
All of Minneork County, we reviewed.
All of Minneork County. And the majority of them were open Tuesday through Friday?
Majority of them were probably open Monday through Thursday.
Monday through Thursday, but for, in particular, people that come up on the weekend.
Tuesday through, the other thing about Tuesday through Friday, not just the people that come up on the weekend, is that we were already closed Monday, so it's easier for the public to get used to the hours.
But it was also a consideration that there are people that are here on the weekend, and it was important to retain those Friday hours for that reason.
I made a concession, because I was the Monday through Thursday guy, you know, and I wasn't really worried about the Friday, but, you know, I made a concession that we do have to worry about the people who come up on the weekends, and so hopefully, that works out.
And I think it makes for a more attractive set of hours for applicants. The old hours were choppy.
Right, it was six days to get to 40 hours.
I mean, obviously, people work them, and that's fine, but when you're trying to attract people in this environment, you need to make sure that you're creating as attractive a package for people as you can. And you don't want hours to be, you know, a negative thing. And this keeps us in very good standing with local towns, and allows us to serve the citizens and the taxpayers of Acton, we think, very well. And the staff are all comfortable with this.
They're happy not towards Saturdays.
So you're proposing those hours going forward?
Yes, it's kind of funny. But so we're looking at May 1st, so I was telling my husband, I said, "If the board approves it, May 1st will be my first Monday off." And then we remembered that May 2nd was the school election, so we'll be here on Monday setting up. But nevertheless, yes, May 1st.
Should we take a vote on this?
Please.
Wait a minute, any comment?
I'm sorry, I can't hear what you said, Thursday hours.
12 to 7:00.
12 to 7:00. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you want to make a motion, David?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We change the hours from Tuesday through Friday. I guess, I don't have the schedule right in front of me.
That's all right, but as reviewed.
As reviewed, yeah.
Okay, I'll second. Any final discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries. Okay.
Now we go to C.
Now we go to C. But before going to C, there's going to be an executive session on a personnel matter. I don't expect any action after this executive session. So why don't we review the rest of the agenda? And so if people want to hang around, they're welcome to, but if you want to bug out early on a beautiful night, that will work as well. So anything on West Shore Drive?
That's just an update, so we can watch the dates as it goes on.
I'm sorry?
It's just an update, so that we can watch the dates, as the bidding dates and so forth.
Okay.
That's it. And then road assessments. The road commissioners did review the list of roads that we put together. It has been sent off to RSMS, and it has been sent off to the engineer. They've, one of them has come back with a couple of questions, which I'll work with the liaison and the road commissioners tomorrow to get him the answers, but they're both working on putting a package together.
Wonderful. That's great news.
Moving forward.
All right, announcements. We have a planning board meeting, a public hearing. I guess this is tomorrow night.
Big night, yes.
At 6 o'clock. This is on proposed June zoning changes. April 15th, a rec committee at 8:30 a.m. Is that right?
Yes, that's a Saturday.
Oh, okay. April 17th, the sevendary committee at 6 p.m. April 19th, special town meeting, 6 p.m., town hall. April 20th, the planning board at 6 p.m. April 24th, warrant and finance committee at 6 p.m. April 26th, select board at 6 p.m.
Okay.
Have a motion to move into executive session.
Any public comment first?
Oh, yeah, any public comment.
With the road assessment, the day the guy came from Chris Taylor, I was so, like, how in-depth are you going to have him go with the road? Like, I didn't have a chance to talk to him, and I didn't make the meeting that morning, so.
So you're talking about with Sabego?
Yes.
Yeah, so pretty much when I talked to him, I asked him if they did one, if they did. I asked him how much detail they would get, and explained to me that what they would do is they would give, from a priority to a non-priority, they would give us roads in like a, you know, red, meaning real bad. They would give a reason and why, and suggestions how to fix it.
Really just prioritizing based on the condition.
Prioritizing.
All right, I just wanted to know that, so.
It wouldn't be something, I don't believe there'll be anything where it would tell you, "You have to do this."
Hold on a minute. Will, did you have any additional suggestions?
No, no, I just...
Were you just curious what was going on?
No, no, because I was supposed to be here that morning, but I didn't, I think he was here a lot earlier than we thought he was going to. I didn't make it. But I just, I was going to ask him that day, and I did talk to him at the dump that day, but he had to get going, so I just...
So I guess I want to make sure that if you have anything additional that you think ought to be included in that, let's talk about that, but...
No, no, I just didn't know like how in-depth they go with their survey.
No, pretty much, you know, he's going to go around, they are going to go around the 52 miles of road that we got in town, and, you know, bad, worst, the bad, the all right, and give us a list of priorities and...
Will they indicate what...
The reason and why.
And how they should be addressed?
Yeah, you know...
Whether this should be, you know, cracks sealed, or this requires a...
Reclaim, or completely overhaul, box cut, or whatever, you know.
Okay.
No, I just didn't know like...
You won't have a set of plans showing...
Well, no, 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 I just didn't know like how in-depth they go. I mean, we could get, you know, core samples, I mean, we could get crazy, but I didn't think so, but...
We don't need a bunch of holes all over.
Just for the two committees I'm on, do we have a better idea now when the warrant might be ready?
We're working on it. The warrant finance is not meeting next Monday, so as I understand it, we're due to have it to you the following Monday to start recommendations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I will say that I took a stab at, and it's probably going to cause everyone to go crazy, I took a stab at trying to consolidate the warrants, because, how many were there? Eighty?
Yeah, and Tommy, you're down to about 20.
I got it down to like 20.
And what did these guys say?
They had not seen it. And but I think...
I'm going to review it.
I think that 80 is probably one factor in perhaps why we don't have great attendance, because it takes, it's very tedious getting through.
That's 2 o'clock in the afternoon.
What for many people are things that probably don't require a lot of discussion, but because they're there, they create a lot of discussion. And so I've shared that with Jennifer. She's going to tee that up for us to consider.
Yeah, I had some ideas.
Yeah, I'm sure, and so, and then we want to share that with the warrant finance committee, but we got to try to streamline this. And I also suggested, whatever we do, if we're making changes, let's run it by legal counsel, to make sure that if we are going to consolidate, that in fact, everything here is appropriate, that it can be done. Because we don't want to get to town meeting and learn that there's some objection to what's been done.
I think it's like you said for this, you got to be, you can't be penny wise and pound foolish. Everything's got to be the way you're working on it, so.
Good.
Soon as we get through taxes, the warrant will be our next project.
Oh.
And the social services, we can pump that together a little bit.
I did one.
Yeah.
One more.
Any update on the two positions that are going to be open?
I've been waiting for them to make a decision on the hours.
Yeah, we could...
Oh.
It may be posted tonight.
That's why we couldn't do it when we did.
They should be going out.
Oh, it might happen tonight.
Okay, they're going out shortly, so. Any other comment, question? Okay. Motion to move into executive session?
Yeah, I'll make a motion and go into executive session 4056A1 personnel.
I'll second. All in favor? Okay, thank you, everyone. Welcome back, everyone. We have a motion, David?
Yeah, I'll make a motion and come out of executive session 4056A1 personnel.
I'll second. All in favor? No action to be reported out of the executive session, so a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second. All in favor? Thank you. Good night, everyone.